Good evening, if we could call this meeting to order. I'd like to start with a moment of silence for prayer or reflection.
Okay, we're going to have adoption of the agenda. I do have one item to add. Under new business, we're going to be adding 11.1, appointment of the alternate assessment review board member.
Okay, any other additions to the agenda? All right, seeing none, adopt it.
Next, we have item 3.1, adoption of the March 19th Regular Medicine Hat City Council Meeting Minutes on page four.
Any errors or omissions? Okay, seeing none, accept them.
Next, under presentations, we have item 4.1, Invest Medicine Hat Annual Report of September 1st, 2016 to December 31st, 2017. And this is item 6.2, with the Development Infrastructure Committee meeting of March 21st. And we have Ryan Jackson, CEO, John Sukerchef, Development Officer, and Quentin Randall, Marketing and Stakeholder Relations Manager, who will be presenting.
Good evening, welcome, Mr. Jackson.
Thanks for having me.
You have the floor.
Okay, well, it's a little bit longer than a year, September 2016 to December of 17. And the reason for the extra three months is to align ourselves with the city's year end of December 31st. So keeping in mind that it is a year, but it is actually, I guess, 15 months rather than 12. So moving forward, of course, we talk about our objective. I think more of it as a purpose, and it certainly is investment attraction heavy. We, to put it in a nutshell, we sell the city. And we sell it for the goal of having sustainable jobs that contribute to the quality, positive quality of life for all of the residents of Medicine Hat. What we do is simple in its concept, but difficult in its application. So research and analysis, which of course we've discussed before, we do market. So in a sales funnel context, we want to make sure that we're marketing appropriately as to the opportunities that we're seeking. And of course, the investment attraction is the sales part of the model that allows us to truly engage with those companies or folks that are looking to locate their business in Medicine Hat. And then stakeholder engagement is something that we also do, which is takes on, whether it be provincially, regionally, or of course, even with respect to a federal focus on working with our partners in the economic development space. So that's what we do. And if my clicker works, we'll go to the next slide. There we go. So some of the highlights from this past year, we really did ramp up, and 17 was really our first full year of operations. To suggest that we had something to build on before might be a bit of a stretch because we essentially created Invest Medicine Hat from scratch. So 17 was that result of our first full year of what we'll call operational readiness. And we ended up hitting a number of folks through marketing impressions, traditionally through Facebook marketing, and also through the newsletters that we probably have all seen. We did not engage Cambridge Analytica as a result of any of those initiatives, so we didn't hack 50 million Facebook people. Over, of course, the number of years that we were, the months that we were doing this, we've got a currently, we as in a royal we sense, that there's over $180 million in projects that are, we'll call it in negotiation or review or ongoing projects. And that is a, that's a subjective number. So on the research side, we do opportunity assessments to say business plans for companies that would, might want to take advantage of what it is here that we've identified as gaps that can be filled. So we did seven of those, and those are seven full business plans, and those take a lot of time to fully flesh out. And we do everything right from branding it to working it up. Distillations, one, for example, that we've done, among others. And of course, the economic report cards, which we provide, and then the sector profiles to really drill down into specific sectors in our target opportunities. And of course, the community profile, and last year, we contributed to the Conference Board of Canada's report. So that's the research and analysis side of the picture. And highlights around that, of course, was specific to the previous slide, the unmanned area vehicles opportunity, the DME assessment, and I know that we've talked a little bit about that. And of course, there's a CPG or Consumer Packaged Goods Opportunities Assessment on the agri-food sector, agriculture being one of the focuses that we have to drive that forward. On the marketing front, year over year, we have some comparisons around social media views. I'm not going to read to you, but you see them up there. We've significantly increased the number of hits that we've gotten, and these are website visitors that aren't, you know, you talk about bounce rate, and there's a lot of other analytics that Quentin can answer. But suffice to say that those are, these are quality views. These aren't just, oh, wrong website, off we go. These are significant visits. I'm a little, you know, website visits, I think, are important, and we've actually gotten some concrete opportunities that come out of that, not just leads. So we want to make sure that we understand that having a significantly, a significant web presence is important, but it only gets us so far. Highlights around that marketing side, of course, you can see there, the one that we like to point to is the Controlled Environment Agriculture Campaign. There's a lot of talk about, and controlled environment agriculture is greenhouses, basically, but greenhouse is not in the content, in the context of, you know, we're growing anything and everything. It's specific to a certain sector, and driving that around, that is, those jobs are good-paying, full-time jobs. They're not, you know, and I don't want to necessarily say that temporary foreign worker opportunities aren't there, but that there's, these are, these are good full-time jobs that pay more than a living wage. So we also did, of course, some advanced manufacturing. You can see the picture there of Atlantis, which was a good news story for us as well. To that end, on the investment attraction side, doesn't sound like a lot, but those, the new jobs that were generated through the investment attraction opportunities that we hit, these are quick wins. Typically, when you decide to invest a significant amount of capital in a community or in a business, it takes a while to decide. So the fact that we were able to drive these forward in a period of time, which we did, we're actually quite proud of. So while it doesn't seem like a lot necessarily, when you see 33 new jobs, big deal, but those 33 jobs are base economic driver jobs, which then move into essentially one job creates another four, or five, or six down the line. So through service industry jobs and whatnot. 10 projects we did either close or through other opportunities, or we lost them. And here are some of the highlights around what we got. Atlantis Research, of course, acquiring Formcheck was something of significance, and they're continuing to grow their portfolio. And there are some other ones there. BSW, which you just saw in the news, I think, last week around the partnership that they have with the college and with the city that we actually unveiled here last year to open council. And then, of course, everyone loves beer, and Medsnapp Ruko ended up opening their shop last, in 17 as well, actually, late 16, I think, is what it was. Stakeholder engagement, we went through and had a number of visits with the company. So not only are we trying to attract investment from outside the city, we're also talking to business owners inside the city as well. I know that's not necessarily something that we engage to or part of our engagement, but what we found is that when we told stories through the lens of existing business owners and marketed them, it actually compelled the outside investment attraction piece to give us a call, because it's relatable. It's a story that they can actually relate to. So very effective, and at the same time, we gained market intelligence from the city business owners that are currently here. And quite frankly, that's market intelligence that you can't, you can't get from the Conference Board of Canada, not to say that their data isn't important. Also of note, you notice, and I know a number of folks around the council table participated in that trade offices visit. We actually had five trade offices from China visit us here last summer, I believe. And we were the only city outside of Calgary and Edmonton to be able to host those folks for a day. The rest of the time, they were only in those two towns. So that was a, that was good work that actually Quentin initiated and connected and facilitated that visit. So since then, we've actually had a number of companies that have now since engaged in export opportunities through those trade offices in China. And I just mentioned that. So talking about the international trade offices from Taiwan and China, and of course, the aerospace meeting that we had in FAMEX, which is a aerospace conference in Mexico, and also, of course, the Site Selectors Guild, which was an invite-only deal that we kind of snuck in the back door with on, and now we're actually part of that, we'll call it club. And not a lot of cities our size, in fact, I can't think of any, at least in Alberta, that we have identified as part of that Site Selectors Guild. So we're going to hang on to that, and we're going to continue to go and meet with those The numbers are in your packets, of course, and you can see a year-over-year comparison. And essentially, what we've done is put them up there for you to take a look at. Of course, it's in your packages, and they speak for themselves. Certainly will answer any questions you have around them, but essentially, the thing most notable is, of course, is social media impressions year-over-year has significantly increased. Again, keeping in mind that these are marketing initiatives and only lead to essentially establishing our city as one of the places that you want to do business in. What's next? Well, we've got, we've got a lot of work still to do. Essentially, we've been asked for a Service Delivery Options Report, which is now in the hands of MIn. And of course, we are now trending, or not trending, we're transitioning to a balanced scorecard report, which we thought was very good. Now that we've actually have some data to actually be able to work with, we can actually synthesize that and deliver it in such a manner that allows us to have more quantitative measurement than just qualitative. And going forward, I think that's very valuable. We've now, we're in year three, or year two and a half, two and three quarters, we're working in year three. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to take a look at the strategy. Council has had an opportunity to discuss strategy late last year, I think it was. And now we're saying, you know what, maybe it's time to look at how we're approaching our investment attraction, and maybe it's a combination of workforce attraction, should certain dominoes fall. Maybe it's business retention and expansion, working with existing businesses and helping them expand, looking at export opportunities perhaps. Do we need to start to move a lot of the content that we're generating through a marketing pivot to an investment-specific news site? And I'm not suggesting that we're creating a news site, but that a lot of the content we're creating starts to make our website a little bit heavy, and that isn't the intent. We want to be dynamic in the way we deliver our information, but at the same time, we also want to make sure we're not overwhelming the visitor as well, and that they're easily finding what they need to find if they're looking to invest Medicine Hat. But if they're looking for stories, perhaps it's something else. So we're looking at that from a strategic standpoint on a marketing side. And of course, maybe we're doing, we need to start doing more video. I know that, you know, reading stories and the content that's created on the web these days is overwhelming, and video seems to, not seems to, video does capture our attention more. They don't need to be long, they don't need to be drawn out, but video is starting to become a little bit more important, and it's attracting more eyeballs than just the written word. So perhaps we look at doing more stories around, you know, in a video context. So, and then cluster development. What is it that we're, we've attracted that we can now expand on? And can we expand on it? I think it's important that we identify what our capacity is and make sure that we don't oversell it, because that's something that we want to make sure that if we're going to make a promise, we want to be able to deliver. And that's something any company that's looking to us is going to want to know. So that's the year ahead, and that is a lot shorter than last year.
Thank you. We've got some questions and comments. Counselor Hirsch.
Well, always a pleasure, Ryan, with your presentation. And as a member of the advisor group, I'm pretty happy to see the progress that's been made. Certainly exciting times. The question I have, though, based on your day-to-day involvement and the other two gentlemen, fine gentlemen that are up there, what are you seeing that our competitive advantages are? And the flip side, what's our competitive disadvantage? And, you know, we can't move the city geographically, et cetera. So within the powers that we have and ability to change, is there something that, you know, we should keep the eye on, on both sides?
Probably our competitive advantage might also be our competitive disadvantage, in that the city has its own utility, its own land, its own infrastructure to be able to have a one-stop shop for any company that comes here looking and inquiring. At the same time, though, there's a finite amount of all of that, to the point where we, as to my earlier comment, you have to be careful on how we manage that growth. So we want to go out and bring in, you know, 50,000 job manufacturing cluster. We just can't, right? So it's about balancing that. So to suggest that Medicine Hat is a disadvantage as it relates to geographically, you know, we have one rail line, not two, there's certain things that we have that, or that we don't have that others have, there's certain things we have that others don't. So it's a hard question to answer, but in the, you know, that would be the best way I could describe it, is that it's kind of a blessing and a curse to a degree, because we only have a certain amount of capacity to be able to do, to attract the companies we want to attract. So hopefully, that answers what you were wondering.
Thank you, Counselor Samaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Jackson. I just had a question about, could you talk about how you define a lead?
How I define a lead?
And what that, just what that means, that number.
So I guess a lead would be someone, to put it in a different context, it would be, a lead is someone that expresses interest, and an opportunity is someone that actually writes it down. So it's one thing to have a conversation and to give them a site visit and show them around and everything else. Another thing would be to establish a letter of intent, or a memorandum of understanding, or something that is tangible in writing, that now we can relate to as an opportunity.
Thank you. The only time I've heard leads before was from Gary Glenn Ross, which is, thank you for that.
Great movie, actually. Great play.
Counselor Friesen.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Jackson. It was good. I always enjoy them, get quite excited about them, in fact. And I also like that they're outcome-based. I've asked for outcomes in the past, and I appreciate you reporting in that way. My question is about your work as a whole. You invest Medicine Hat, certainly, the reason you're here is because of Medicine Hat. And yet, we're part of a larger region, and some of the opportunities that you've addressed in your report are bigger than us. And I, for one, believe that if it's a regional opportunity, it's also one for Medicine Hat and the other way around. So of the approximate, and I know you said it was very approximate, $180 million that you're currently negotiating or considering, how much of that would be Medicine Hat? How much would be the region? What would be the implication of a regional find in advantage to the city of Medicine Hat? And I can use the provincial aerospace as a good example, but I don't want to give you examples, but I particularly like that one, but I'd like to hear what you have to say about that, because I think there's some confusion there about, well, is it the region or is it us? And what's the difference? And how is that an advantage to us?
Yeah, yeah. And so the opportunities are the things, and again, it is, as you mentioned, a subjective number, and I said the same thing, those are Medicine Hat opportunities. So outside in the region, and we have a great collaboration with our regional partners, Pep is actually, has moved into our building and is, you know, kind of right next to us, so to speak. So, and working through that whole rising tide floats all boats mentality is exactly what we feel as well. I've said privately that we're, we have a regional perspective with a Medicine Hat bias. So we're going to try and make it work inside the four corners of the city, and if it doesn't work, we're not going to turn it away or try and, you know, we're going to work with our partners to make it work. So to answer your question in a, it's specific from the numbers perspective to Medicine Hat, but it's not, so regionally, we understand there are other projects ongoing, but we only know what they share with us. So it's a bit of a, kind of, we can ask, but then we might not get an answer, and sometimes we do. So we share with them when they ask, and so far, we've had, we've had good cooperation there, and that's basically the way it sits.
Okay, so you can't, just to follow up, you can't quantify it. You can attempt to quantify it and demonstrate an advantage, but it's pretty difficult to put it into numbers or hard research, hard facts.
Yeah, it is only to the extent that we haven't been asked to do that. So we can certainly try and find out what that might be, but it's not something that we've been asked to do in our reporting as the regional number versus what the city's, what the city number would be.
Thank you, Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you very much for the report, and I'm really glad to see that you're having some focus on workforce attraction, because one of the things I've found in the last six months talking to a fair number of businesses in our community is there is some need to attract particularly skilled workers into our community. And that definitely is an opportunity to increase employment without having to attract a new industry. I mean, basically, just filling those open positions would certainly go a long way to, you know, creating more economic development in our community. And I'm not sure just how we focus on that, but I think that's something we really need to look at in 2018.
Yeah, I agree, 100%.
Thank you. Counselor Diboneski.
Your Worship, I had the benefit of seeing this in committee, but I do want to thank Mr. Jackson and Quentin and John as well for your tireless efforts to bring good information, good news to us. I will briefly speak to the 8.8 million investment, 33 job component. One of the things I've heard more than enough, although it's a good question, is how many jobs are we attracting? And we've talked about this before, and it's very difficult, and I've pulled back a little bit on that, because I know a job for the sake of a job doesn't necessarily mean much if the investment isn't there, or it's not going to attract maybe other-like businesses and build on itself. So I'm not, I'm not fixed on that, but I do, in bringing that up, want to emphasize the fact that it can be, as you spoke to Counsel Samaras' question, that leads or the opportunities can be varied and mixed, and maybe even significant, but it's the right one that lands at the right time that can have that multiplying effect that we're looking for, which in the end derives jobs. So the public, I think, understands that. If I can understand, I believe the public can, because we're trying, an approach that is much more, I think, transparent and very fluid and flexible when it comes to the kinds of opportunities that we're trying to go after. Having said that, you spoke to the Service Delivery Options Report that's coming back, and specifically, you talk about cluster development. Can you just, so when, I mean, for the sake of the public, maybe briefly talk about cluster development? Are you, how do you determine if that's the angle you move toward? Not that you purposefully or intentionally don't move toward it, but if you're looking at agribusiness or petrochemical, energy, manufacturing, how do you determine what area you're going to pursue and put more of your eggs in one basket, if you will, without deterring or turning off potential investment in another area?
That's a good question. So, I mean, it starts with an overall strategy around, and having some sort of an economic, you know, figure that allows us to expand on, and at the same time, address capacity as to whether or not a cluster would even be able to expand as opposed to being a one-off. So I think in a, you know, kind of at a high level, the cluster development idea is essentially investment readiness from industrial land versus commercial land versus light industrial land. And you hear about, or you see in other jurisdictions, for example, business parks with serviced land with infrastructure that is for sale. And whether it's a five-acre parcel or a 10-acre parcel, and it's a, and it's a light industrial play, then it's suited more for, say, an oilfield services company or whatever. If it's a larger industrial component, it might be petrochemical clusters, similar to the one that we have with Methanex and CF. But the strategy itself has to be borne out through a lot of research and understanding where the capacity is and where our skill sets is. To Counselor Turner's earlier comment about workforce attraction, do we have the skills or the workforce to be able to fill that need? So there's a lot of variables there that we have to basically pull together to be able to say, okay, okay, we have a, we have a cluster strategy because we have the workforce, we have the capacity, whether it be for land or utilities or infrastructure for EU. And all of that gets baked down into, or boiled down into a cluster of, in a particular sector. To not discourage other investment, if it isn't in that cluster, we want to continue to make sure that we essentially address each inquiry, inquiry into setting up shops, so to speak, and not say, no, we can't do that. It might be that we can't do it for any number of the reasons I just mentioned, but at the same time, those are, those are one-offs. And that's essentially what we're doing now, is that we have, in the sectors we're focusing on, the sectors are now coming to us and going, okay, what can you do for us? And it's, and there's an inducement piece to this as well. A lot of companies don't understand that there's a certain amount of latitude that we can induce companies to move here, but that we're playing against the state of Louisiana offering up $50 million in inducements to a company to move there. We can't do that. So I know it's a long answer to a question, but it's, it comes down to making sure that when we do some sort of a cluster strategy, that it's well thought out and that it's strategic, but when we actually do have it, we're able to really be turnkey to the point where it's ready to go. So, you know, it's something that we can look at from a strategic, and that's why we put it up there, is that it's, it might be, or it might not be. We might not be able to develop a cluster because we've maxed out in certain areas, right? We might not have the workforce anymore or whatever. So that's, hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you, Counselor Turnbull.
Thank you, Mayor Cluxton. Yes, Ryan, thank you for your presentation. I know your job is not easy, because every city in the province is trying to lure the same businesses as we are. I thought your point was well-taken about the advantages and the disadvantages. So we had for years and years and years, you know, in Southern Alberta, the great advantage of punch a hole in the ground and you were awash in natural gas. Shale gas comes along in the United States, and the industry is in the toilet, and unfortunately, those jobs have moved away. So now, fortunately, new businesses sort of pop up. So we'll talk about blockchain and crypto coin, and they are here with $100 million investment, some 50 jobs. And so it's always exciting about what is on the foreground? What is, what's happening that's going to change? What new enterprises can we sort of try to tap into? So for me, that's what cluster should be. Where, is there another industry coming forth like hot age? Now, there's lots of hot eights would like to come here. Unfortunately, we can't produce that kind of power, and maybe we would not want to. So I recognize how tough your job is. I guess I'd like to know is, what's the next step for us? Like, you know, being in economic, everybody always used to say, don't give me the economic committee. Man, that's just like hanging your guy out to dry, because it's very difficult to get results, very difficult to get results. But we have you and your two cohorts, which have already produced some great results. So I just encourage you to keep at it and find ways to bring that extra business to our city. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Varga.
Well, through the chair, I got to talk about the leads part.
Well, through the chair, I got to talk about the leads part. You know, I love leads, and you looked right at me when you talked about the leads. But I guess for the factor that you you back it up with people coming back for the second and third time to see whether Medicine Hat is the right place to be, that's a great lead, right? I think in the past, we we haven't seen that happen, and I think it's because of you and your team that that things are happening and things are going on within our community that are for the better. You're always looking. I know that John's always researching different things all over the place to find out what the best fit is for our city and trying to work the people that you guys talk to into coming back to Medicine Hat. So I think on on our part, the information in your in your package is very thorough, lots of information to go on that we can use to as councilors to facts and figures for our city that we can maybe help out with that part of selling our city a little bit more like you do. So thank you for all that. Hopefully, keep up the good work and some of those leads turn into reality where it's better for our community.
That's true, if I might.
Yeah, go ahead.
And and to the opportunities or the advantages and disadvantages, one of the big advantages and and we've and we were joking, actually, outside closed. Investment is in hat, we kick up a lot of dust, and and I know that we're we kick up a lot of dust sometimes to the to the ire of city staff, to the point where we've thrown a lot of opportunities at them. And I can say that one of the biggest opportunities we have is the is the ability for city staff to be able to get through all of them and the timeliness of their response and the ability that they've had to work with us is is second to none. And I can't I can say that both as a former developer, as a business owner myself, there's a lot of stuff that happens that there is no script for. There's no process for working a deal. And so city staff has been very, very helpful. Sandra, Grant, Stan, right up through Moretta, all of them have been fantastic in in allowing us to and very supportive of of us being able to bring that that forward to them. And if there was only enough hours in the day to be able to do it, you know, we're getting emails back and forth, 10, 11 in the evening, you know, 6:00 in the morning, like, there's no there's no time clock on this, so we appreciate the efforts. And that is actually a strategic advantage that we have as it relates to the ability for the city to be responsive. So I wanted to make that clear as well.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one. I was reading one of your reports, and I don't maybe you can't be very specific, but I'm going to call them exit interviews. You've part of your action items, you were talking to companies that chose not to come to Medicine Hat. And I'm gathering you asked them why or what did we do to turn them off or why they didn't even consider us? Can you give us some insight into what you heard on that?
Yeah, without I mean, without being specific around who or or what, a lot of it is from an investment readiness standpoint, a lot of it's real estate specific around, you know what, it wasn't the right sized building, or you guys just didn't have anything in inventory. And I'm not talking about you guys as in the city of Medicine Hat, it's just, you know, if they would have been looking in 2015, early 2016, we would have had the space. But, you know, it's a nice problem to have, I guess, so to speak, but it really does come down, the majority of the time, it's it's because there wasn't something ready to go now that that really led to the company either deciding to go somewhere else or or not moving forward at all. So that's the majority of them. There are a few others, the cannabis legislation, bylaw, yada, yada. We've had a ton, as I know the city has as well, of people coming and saying, hey, you know, can we, you know, open this or can you help us do that? I mean, and it's, yeah, it's it's a green rush, as if you will. And so but yeah, a lot of it is is real estate specific.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Can I get a motion for reception?
So moved. Second.
All right, if we could vote. That was unanimous, thank you.
All right, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is item 4.2, the Urban Environment and Recreation Advisory Board, Healthy Food and Beverage Choices in Recreation Facilities. And we have Pat McIntosh, Registered Dietitian from Alberta Health Services, speaking this evening.
Welcome, Ms. McIntosh, you have the floor.
Thank you for having me. And so as they've announced, I'm a Registered Dietitian with Alberta Health Services, Health Promotion. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about what led to the survey that I did last fall. And so since 1980, childhood obesity has effectively tripled, so that now in Alberta, 30% of kids and 60% of adults are overweight or obese, and this has led to an increased risk of chronic diseases such as diabetes, heart disease, osteoporosis, and cancer. And so we're finding that food environments, which includes rec centers, have actually contributed to this increase. About half of rec center users are children and youth, and youth who participate in sports actually consume more sugar sweetened beverages, calories, and junk food than kids who don't participate in sports, just by sheer environments that they're in. And so also looking at the obesity issue are the U of A, they've got an Alberta Nutrition Report Card, which is in its third year, and the University of Toronto's got an epic food study, which also has Alberta data. And they're finding that the food environments are dominated by high calorie, low nutrient foods, which are also more accessible, cheaper, and more heavily promoted than the healthier options. And we're finding that now the poor diet has actually surpassed tobacco as a leading behavioral risk factor for mortality in Canada. And compared to physical activity, poor diet is three and a half times greater effect than even low physical activity. So we've really got some work to do. So also in regards to obesity, the Alberta Nutrition Guidelines were developed to help people find out what healthier food choices are. And they've done this so that people can see that foods are divided into three categories or groups. Choose most often are healthy nutrient-rich foods like milk, fruits, and vegetables. Choose sometimes are also healthy choices, but they do have some added sugars and salt like chocolate milk or deli meats. Choose least often have no nutrient value or are high in salt, sugar, and fat. And we're finding that when we look at the benchmark for that Alberta Nutrition guideline, the Alberta Nutrition Report Card, their benchmark was that 75% of choices available in public facilities should be healthier ones. What they actually found when they looked at Alberta facilities was only 30 to 35% are the healthier options, the orange and the green. And when I went to the Family Leisure Center in the Kinplex and looked at our vending, I found that only about 27% of drinks were healthier options, and only 10 to 25% of our snacks were healthier options. We didn't even have any choose most often choices. And so healthy eating really is more than just individual choice. It's strongly influenced by the environments we're in, which isn't just the food available, but also how they're marketed, what kids see adults eating, and even the presumption of healthy. Rec centers are healthy environments, but when you have unhealthy foods there, people wrongly assume that they are healthy. So all of these are contributing to the problem. And so the mandate of of rec facilities is to enhance the health and wellness of our population, but we're offering foods that don't promote this. And so the Framework for Recreation in Canada, which is a guiding document for not only Medicine Hat but all of Canada Public Recreation Facilities, says that the well-being of individuals and communities is really at the heart of recreation and that this sector is an important partner in addressing the issues we're facing, like obesity. And one of their goals is actually to ensure supportive environments to help people make the healthy choice. But when there's an abundance of unhealthy foods and beverages in those facilities and a lack of healthy options available, when there's prominent advertising of those unhealthy choices and a culture that promotes the consumption, we're really not making it easy for people to make that healthy choice, even if they wanted to. And so I asked patrons in Medicine Hat what they wanted, and they strongly said. There we go. I did this survey last November, I got 251 responses, and I'll show you what they've said, but overwhelmingly, they want healthy choices as as well. So I started by looking at what facilities, and we got a pretty good cross-representation of them. The Family Leisure Center was, of course, the largest respondent. I asked, how often do they use the facilities? And they're there a lot. The people that are there in the facilities are frequent users. About 30% use them one to two times a week, over 55, about 55% use them three or more times a week. So they're there often. I asked, how important is healthy eating to you? And about 90% said it either very important or important to them and their family. So healthy eating is one of the things they're really looking for. What percentage of foods do they think should be healthy in rec centers? Overwhelmingly, about 60% said at least 75% should be healthy, followed by 50% and 100%. So if you look at only 2% said 25% should be healthy, that's actually where we're at. We're only offering 25% healthy choices, so we're not meeting what they want. How often do they buy foods and beverages? Not very often at all. Most said rarely or only one to three times a month. And most said if there were healthier choices available, about 80% or more would buy more foods and drinks. So there's that opportunity for revenue there. I also asked, what are their greatest barriers for choosing healthy foods? About 70% said limited healthy choice is the main reason why they're not choosing to purchase foods and drinks, followed by cost, and they don't like the selection that's Most would be willing to pay comparable or slightly higher prices for healthier choices. And the other option that they looked at, again, not applicable to all respondents, but another option for revenue as well, is that if there were healthy meal options at pre-order for events at the facilities, they would purchase those as well. So I think it's really important, and I hope I've convinced you that healthy eating is important at our facilities and that we really have a long way to go. But I'm asking the city to consider including healthy eating in their strategic planning moving forward, in perhaps a healthy eating policy, or in looking at requests for proposals as contracts come up for renewal so that we can address healthy eating in our facilities. There we go. I'm asking that we do that so that we can perhaps look like other facilities and municipalities like St. Albert, where this one is. They actually had a national survey that said they're the number one city to raise a family, the number one healthiest community in Canada. We talked about Invest Canada, perhaps we can look at making our city healthier so that's another way to promote our quality of life in our city as the place to be. And I think it would actually tie in nicely. I peeked at your new strategic plan that came out, and I think it would fit in with strategic with number four in terms of keeping that community safe and safe and vibrant. Number four said maintain community safety, develop policies, standards, partnerships, programs, and services to meet emerging issues. I think healthy eating could be one of those emerging issues that the city could look at including in terms of moving forward. Any questions? Yes, I'm done, sorry.
I thought you had more slides. Councilor Friesen.
Well, first of all, thank you very much, Mrs. McIntosh, for bringing this forward. I know that you presented this at the UAB meeting, and Council Samra was very taken with it, and and we both agreed that we wanted we wanted it brought to council. I know there aren't tons, hundreds of people in chambers here, but there are that watch. And it's really important, I think, for people to understand the difference that healthy eating can make, and it's not just because we think so, it's because there's sound research and data to support that. I know in the past, we have tried to incorporate healthy eating choices, not always successfully. And I think your data is really interesting in that way. It says to me anyway, and I mean, I'm sure you can interpret it better than me, but it says to me that it's it's a bit of a journey in society, you know? It may 10 years ago, maybe, or five years ago, and we tried, it might not have been as big a focus for folks as it is continuing to be because when we when we receive the kind of education you help us with and and Canada and provincially, we realize the kind of problems that obesity brings. And so it's not a little issue, it's a very, very large issue on the horizon of our future, of our of our city, of our province, of our country. So I really support this item is going to come up later in the agenda, but we might as well deal with it now. I really support the recommendation there. I'd I'd like personally to see us address healthy eating with a strategic lens in in our facilities in the future. Some are contracted, we don't tell them what to do, but we certainly have our own that we do as well, and and I absolutely support this. I don't I don't personally believe you can just change from one thing to the other because people don't buy in as well as they do when it comes with an education focus and with growing knowledge about the difference that it makes in their lives. So that's why I I don't believe we should just say, let's change everything tomorrow. I think we need to look at healthy eating more strategically and give it consideration when we're making choices in our facilities. So I I just, you know, I'm not saying what you said as well as what you said, but I really want to support the motion, and thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
And I think when you attempt to oversimplify it, you're setting yourself up to fail anyway because it's so multifactorial. It's not just simply placing some healthy foods there, it's product placements, it's the marketing, it's the competitive pricing, it's all of that 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 goes together. And certainly, Alberta Health Services is working provincially to develop some resources that different facilities can use for marketing, and we're looking at, from a community aspect, maybe moving forward with with community-wide measures that we can do. I know our Healthy Communities meeting in April, we're going to address not only the survey but possibility, I mentioned the Alberta Nutrition Report Card, that's a provincial report card. They've got funding through till 2021, and they're offering the opportunity for communities to gather their own local data, and they will then compile it and share a local community report back. So if that's something that Medicine Hat would find useful in terms of local data, we could also do that as well, and we'd have the opportunity to determine ourselves which factors, which environments, which sites we gather data from, and it's simply taking snapshots of vending and menu boards, and they they do all of the data compiling for us.
Thank you, Councilor Samra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had an excellent conversation and discussion about this at the Urban Environment and Recreation Advisory Board, so it's good to have this conversation here at City Council as well. I agree that we are sending signals by promoting healthy living at recreation facilities, but then selling pretty unhealthy food there. I guess my, if I can play devil's advocate here, is there does seem to be some disconnect between what people say on surveys and how they actually behave when it comes to making some of these choices. At the Public Library, we brought in a specific vending machine that only dealt with healthy foods, and, you know, that was the whole goal of of us bringing that machine in there. And the only things that moved there were the were the unhealthy foods. So I'm wondering how we can reconcile maybe some of the things that they say on on the service and how real how much it connects to behavior on the ground, whether you had any thoughts on that?
Again, I think part of it comes down to you can't simply place food there, you have to do some marketing, you have to do competitive pricing. Some facilities have found just doing taste tests where people have an opportunity, sort of like when you walk into Costco, how many of you walk into Costco, try food, and that then influences you to buy the product, right? There's a lot of different marketing techniques that people can use to help win that over. And and it doesn't mean we have to move to 100% choose healthy. You know, a lot of municipalities and facilities have started with 50% so that you're not taking away people's choice. It's because right now, people have no choice, it's either unhealthy or nothing. So it's kind of just moving into a little bit more of a different area so that you're meeting them halfway and trying some different strategies, not just placing it there.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Dibinoski.
I too would like to congratulate the UAB Committee for bringing this report forward through yourself. Lots of food for thought, no pun intended, but the the truth is, I think you can influence behavior, and I know if I can take a moment, cite a school system that I worked for and a school that I used to work for. Over a decade ago, we made a conscious decision in advance of any real push provincially and elsewhere to remove soda pops, options, and juices. Quite frankly, we're we're at the same level as the soda pops at that time, as far as sugar content, et cetera. And we we are in our food options, we removed the desired snack-type things, and we put in much more healthier options. And what we did, we did it wholesale, and we we anticipated, and for school settings, it can be a revenue component, but we anticipated pushback, we anticipated rejection, and we we found very much the opposite when those were the only options offered. And I'm not talking, you know, broccoli in a container on the in the machine. I mean, but but options that were much healthier and had shelf life, and we worked with resources to develop what options were there, we found the behavior did start to change. Now, when they went home, perhaps it was all for naught, but at least we had the opportunity to affect that kind of educational piece with the students in that in that setting. And I know all school settings strive for that, in particular, elementary and junior high settings, I know in all the districts. So I extrapolate that into our setting. I mean, we have the option. What's interesting here is it'd be one thing for you to do do analysis and then bring it back and have council be moved by it and and make wholesale changes that aren't supported by the public, but we're hearing very much the opposite. The public desires it and supports it. I think where we would perhaps see mixed results I think where we would perhaps see mixed results, and it'd be interesting, would be doing the seventy-five, twenty-five, seventy-five nutritional, twenty-five traditional. I think you might struggle in that regard, but I think if that's the way to move us there, that's probably what we need to do. But I applaud this wholeheartedly, and in fact, I'm ready to endorse it today.
Thank you, Counsel.
Seen in schools with the lunch programs, everyone was worried that if you provided only whole wheat buns, they wouldn't eat it, and exactly what you said, if that's the option, there is no question at all, and it could be the same in the facilities. If all the burgers were on whole wheat buns, which is a very simple and easy change to make, people probably wouldn't really notice or care.
Thank you, Counsel Samraj.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment about process here. You know, the city has a whole network of committees, of advisory committees, whose purpose is to kind of be a conduit for public concerns that are then brought to the city for our consideration, which I think this motion reflects that kind of process of how this whole system is intended to work, so I'll be supporting this as well. Thank you.
Counsel Friesen.
Your worship, if there are no other questions or comments, I'm wondering if we could just move that item forward while Mrs. McIntosh is at the podium.
Sure.
On page forty-six of the Public Services Committee meeting, you'll see item number one, is there for adoption? The City Council directs that consideration be given to increasing and promoting healthier food and beverage choices in recreation facilities. I'm wondering if we could move that item forward and take the vote now, and I will make the motion.
Counsel's okay with that?
I'll second that.
Okay. I think you've already moved it, so we can, any other questions or comments on that motion on item number one of the Public Services Committee meeting? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Next, we have under Public Hearings, item 5.1, Bylaw 4474, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to close a public utility lot at the west end of Tenth Street Southeast, and this is on page nine of your agenda.
So moved. We require a public hearing, so if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. I will ask a second time if anybody would like to come down and speak. You want to vote on the second reading, sure? Did you second it?
Second.
Okay. We can vote on second reading. That was unanimous, thank you. And I will ask a third and final time if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel Samraj.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted a question for maybe somebody that was at this committee meeting. There was an email from a concerned resident in that area about inability to park on that lane or turn around. Can anybody maybe help me understand what his concerns were here?
Counsel Dumanowski and I have been to that site and seen it. I read the email, I wasn't really quite sure why it would be any different going up one side or the other, and why that PUL needed to remain open, but I think also the Commissioner is quite, if you don't mind, is quite versed on the exact concern this resident has.
Thank you, through the chair, or to the chair. I believe in reviewing the material, the concern was that the email writer felt it was easier to drive up one side, one through the lane, and then come back through the road. I had the same concerns or observations, the grades are the same on both the lane and the road, and there will be a turnaround built on Tenth as well. So there will be ample opportunities to maneuver vehicles.
Okay, does that? Any other questions or comments? Counsel Varga?
Through the chair to maybe Mr. Schwarzenberger. What is the concerns here on this? It's a trail path that it's an easy access to go around from one side to the other side. So just wondering what the concerns are by them driving through there.
Through the chair, this application or this process was initiated by the purchase of a vacant residential property at the west end of the street. The purchasers desire to develop that property. The current pathway on the PUL actually encroaches at both the north and the south ends onto the residential property. So the Utilities Department and the Municipal Works Department evaluated the road. It's actually a roadway built on a public utility lot, it's not a registered roadway. It was deemed to be not necessary for operations. There's other ways to manage municipal operations without this PUL being used, so the determination was to proceed with recommending closing it.
Okay.
Just a supplementary question, then. When we do close it, I understand that the turnaround will be there, and the curb will be there, of course, so they can't jump the curb. How are we going to stop it from the back lane if they come around that residence after it's built to, or is there no room there? Sorry, I haven't been to the site, I wish I would have went to it to look at it.
There will be physical barriers put in to prevent any more traffic going through.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Dumanowski.
Just to add to that, on the other end of that roadway system is a steeper incline, so it would prevent anyone from going around.
Any other questions or comments on second reading? This is third? Okay. Oh, yeah, right, we voted on second, that's right. Counsel Friesen.
I just wanted to make the comment that I did go over and look myself last week, and because, you know, when you, I'm going to support this, but when you get someone who shows concern, you want to make sure that you understand that. And I'm satisfied that it was, number one, it was not, it is not a registered roadway, was never intended to be an actual roadway, but because we're going to have some kind of a turnaround there, that we'll be able to take into account the concerns of the people that wrote to us. So that was my major concern, that access was not cut off completely, and I think this makes sure that they can still access the property, the rental property they talk about. So I'm going to support it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If we could get a motion for third reading.
I'll move for third reading.
Second.
All right, any other questions or comments? If we could vote? And that was unanimous.
Okay, next under Reports, we have item 6.1, the Administrative Committee Meeting of March 21st, and this report is on page fifteen and is for information.
So moved. Any questions or comments? Counsel Turnbull?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, I always like the citizens of our beautiful city and council as well to understand the money we're spending and why we're spending it. And so as you can see on six-one, six-one and two, and in five-two, we are upgrading our sanitary sewer rehabilitation and water and sanitary rehabilitation as well at a cost of slightly over five million dollars, which was budgeted for 2017 and some of it in the year 2018. And again, on Second Avenue Northeast and Fifth Avenue Southeast, water and sewer again. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Lance to sort of give us an update on the asset management policy of our city and why the problems that we're having with some of our concrete pipes. But he's also going to comment, I think, I don't steal his thunder, how much using the system of using fillers rather than digging up concrete pipes which costs a ton of money and the filler goes so. Commissioner Lance, would you comment on that for us, please? Or through, so, CEO?
Counsel Turnbull.
Only because I asked him earlier, I'm sorry. If you would like to take it over, that's fine, too.
Through the chair to Counselor Turnbull. So the upgrade to the sewer is in relation to erosion taking place in some of our concrete sewer pipe, not in any of other sewer pipe. So due to erosion that results from a low flow condition, which creates some sulfuric acid developing in the water space. We'll use lining to repair that pipe, and then the lining is less than half the cost of digging up the streets and replacing the pipe, so that's what will take place. And the concrete pipe was probably purchased based upon the spec at the time, engineering spec at the time, and the sizing of pipe that was required. And the rest of the piping is based upon cast iron piping that's been in the city since the early nineteen hundreds and is accordance with the policy for our long-term asset management plan replacement over the next thirty years.
Thank you so much.
Counsel Dumanowski.
Thank you for that. I can anticipate that there'll be questions from the public regarding to carry drive or portions of it being dug up or relined or whatever, they'll see some work going on, or they'll just read this and be curious. Not so many years ago, we had significant excavation and work done along carry drive. Now, I need to maybe correct myself, but I'm not sure if that was the Perma line at the time. They excavated along the green belt component of carry drive, and it went down Sholton Hill. But for the, an educated counselor asking the very question, and maybe the public who will ask the same, that we're seeing more work, millions of dollars more going into that area, can you maybe distinguish? I know you weren't here, but perhaps the CEO can answer that, because not so many years ago, I don't know, dozen years ago or less, there was work, significant work done along there.
Through the chair to Counsel Dumanowski, we can certainly take that away. It's before my time as well, so I'm not sure exactly what that was. But I want to be clear that with this liner technology, we're not digging up a whole lot. The whole point of this technology is that you can in fact insert it and pull it through the pipe so that you don't have to go through major excavation. You need the beginning and the endpoints to be dug up, but you don't have to dig up the entire trench.
Just a point of clarification, I guess what I'm trying to deal with in advance is the public who will, the same rhetoric when they see an intersection being dug up once and then three years later dug up again, we all get the same question, why didn't you do it all at the same time? We'll perhaps see some work going on here, and there will be questions around work that was done a decade ago and now being, either it's a completely different job potentially, or it's having to line work that was already done not so long ago. So we're going to inevitably get those questions, so.
Thank you, Counsel Varga.
Just through the chair, a question, H2S, which is the gas, is there any way of preventing this from being such a problem in the future? Is there any way that, I don't know whether is it flow, is it some way of making it better so that H2S gas doesn't come so rapidly or stay there for a long period of time to make these pipes rough? I don't know if there's a way to do that or not, but maybe to understand it better?
Through the chair, so the key thing is not to oversize your pipes, because if you don't have sufficient flow relative to the size of your pipe, you will have hydrogen sulfide forming. So anytime we overbuild or oversize, we run the danger of getting this kind of deterioration of the pipe, and so the rightsizing of the pipe is very important.
I do remember what Counsel Dumanowski is talking about. I'm going to say it's more than ten years ago, but I can't remember if it was water, sewer, storm sewer, I can't remember. Now, in this case, though, the oversizing of the pipes was probably done on a estimate of future growth in the area, which probably hasn't occurred or didn't occur, or perhaps, so not going to blame previous staff or councils for the oversizing, but that could be it as well, I would guess. Counsel Turnbull?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I guess it comes down to we have an obligation as a council to ensure that our sewer and water pipes are not going to break down, and we're not going to have spillages and further problems. And you're right, some pipes, as cast iron, have been in the ground since the early nineteen hundreds, and they still work fine. Obviously, at some point in the history of our city, we decided to go to concrete pipes, that seemed to be the, obviously at that time, and I think the mayor's right, obviously the pipes were far too big for what we needed at that time. So it's always great to say, I can go back forty or fifty years and say, you know, maybe we should have done something different. But the whole point is, we continue to operate our city to ensure that we can provide the best possible environmental utilities as we can at the very, very lowest price.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if we can vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Our next report, item 6.2, Development and Infrastructure Committee Meeting of March 21st, 2018, and this is on page twenty-two of your agenda, and it is for adoption and information.
So moved.
Second that.
Before we deal with this report, I'm going to recuse myself on item number one as I am still listed as an active kinsman, although I haven't done a very good job of that. But I'm going to recuse myself, so I'm going to ask Counsel Samraj to take the chair. I'm not telling you what to do, but I would suggest that you try to separate these two items and deal with item one while I am out of the room. All right, I get to sit in the big chair for a little while. Can I get a motion to separate the two items, please?
So moved.
Oh, where do I? All right, all in favor? Okay, so we are going to deal with the first item. I'd like a motion for adoption, please. So moved.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments on this kinsman lotto home? Counsel Varga?
Through the chair, the kinsmen always do great work for us, and I think last year we gave fifty percent, I believe, and this year we're only giving twenty-five percent. So I think they understood when we got to them last year that things are going to change and eventually you're going to have to become self-sufficient on buying these lots, so it's gone from fifty percent to twenty-five percent, and where it goes next year, I guess we vote on that next year, again, when it comes forward. But again, I think it's a good cause, and I know they had some struggles this year, I believe, with sales, and every year seems to be a struggle. Hopefully, we're over that hump where people will spend a few more dollars on tickets for this one coming up. So it's always a good deal because all the money that they make goes right back into the community, so it's not leaving our community, it's staying in our community, so I think it's a great deal for us to continue on with this process.
Counsel Hirsch.
Well, I just want to thank the kinsmen for many, many years of continued voluntary service to our community. I think the amount of dollars that we look in terms of rebating back to the kinsmen pale in comparison in terms of what they contribute to our community. I think what's important, and I want to congratulate the winner of the kinsman house that was drawn yesterday, April 1st, so congratulations to the winner. But going forward, I think one to Counselor Varga's point is that they had some challenges with regards to, you know, just the start of the development of the building in the last time. So I think what they've done to exploit the process is bought a existing property, did what they could. You know, at the end of the day, I think we recognize, sure, it's something of a lottery, but I think people have to acknowledge the community's greatest needs in terms of what's been, the kinsmen's all about. So I'm prepared to, on a go-forward basis, look what I can to support them wherever I can.
Okay, no other comments, let's vote.
We'll just wait for the mayor to return to chambers. Okay, and we're on item number two.
Okay, the Arts and, sorry, where are we? Sorry, the supplementary, where are we?
Investments in Hat.
Oh, there we go. Yes, Investments in Hat. We've already dealt with that, so any other questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Okay, our next report. Okay, our next report is item six point three, the Public Services Committee Meeting of March twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, and this is on page forty-six of your packet. Item number one, you did already vote on and dealt with under the presentation section, so we are dealing with item number two.
Uh, your worship, I'm going to move, uh, item number two for adoption. But before we vote, I just, I wanna make a recognition of someone in the gallery, because it has to do with public services. Um, it's been a long time since he's been here in City Hall with us, but former chief Ron, fire chief Ron Bell is in the gallery tonight and I'd just like to recognize him. Ron, give us a wave. Thank you very much.
Good to see you. All right, could, could we get a second round on the motion to?
One second, that.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions or comments on the public art recommendation? Councillor Somraj?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's been, uh, two months and there's two public art recommendations that have come forward, uh, to city council here. Uh, I, uh, I'm happy to say that I will be supporting this recommendation from the Public Art Committee. My objection to the previous one was, was about process and I, I like to say that the process, uh, worked very well in this case. Uh, you know, we try to, art is such a subjective thing that we try to separate it from just the whims of, of councillors here and so we've created a policy and we've created a public art committee to, uh, to give, uh, reasoned judgment on different commissions that come forth, uh, using certain criteria and then the recommendation comes forward to council. So I think everything's worked, uh, as it, as it should, but I, I do understand that public art can be controversial at times and so it always is, uh, it always is good for, uh, for council to talk about it. Uh, I think we all know that Calgary and their blue ring, uh, were, uh, one, always one decision away from, uh, from something that can be divisive. So, uh, yeah, public art is a, is a great part of a community, but I think it's always good to just, uh, always have a second look at it. But I'm looking forward to this one. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Turnbull, well said.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so first of all, I'd like to also thank the Public's, uh, Art Committee for the, uh, the, the great work that they've done and I have no problem with your choice of the art. My problem is I don't like the policy, uh, that the city has when it comes to public art. I would like to see us change that policy so that we support local artists anytime we can, so that we can help our local artists showcase their talents and help them build portfolios so that their careers or their expectations in the art world, uh, can be helped. So unfortunately, uh, if I, uh, in my good conscience, if I vote to, um, uh, pass this, it means that I agree with the policy and I do not agree with the policy and I would like to see that policy changed. So I will not be supporting it.
Thank you. Councillor Hirsch?
Well, your worship, I, fortunately, uh, I'm a man of integrity and, and I will not be supporting this, uh, just on the, on the bare sense that, uh, although, um, and believe me, I've heard the arguments about the, the merits of art, et cetera, uh, right now physically is not the right time for us, uh, to look at this. And I, I, the only thing I'm saying is I, I will not be supporting it at this point in time. Having said that, I'm, I'm more than willing to look at this at a later date when we're on, on better, uh, financial position. Um, we understand a one percent increase to taxes is roughly seven hundred thousand dollars, so let's understand this and give some context to that. A hundred thousand dollars is not a small amount of money, uh, and I think for us and for me to look at a taxpayer, when we go back to them and we say, oh, by the way, we're gonna be raising your taxes, and they go back to me and say, did you do everything you can to be physically responsible? And I wanna be able to say yes. So, you know, this is the cherry on top of the sundae. We've got the sundae in the, in the, uh, Viner Center, I'm very happy to see that. It's something that, um, previous councils looked at doing and I'm, I'm willing to support it. Um, but again, we just don't need the cherry at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Friesen.
Interesting comment. Um, I, I think, uh, as the public can, uh, looks at us talking about this, uh, within the last month, we've had two items come to this council, both within the purview of the Public Arts Committee. One was not supported by a majority of council and I'm suspecting this one will be. If I was member of the public, I'd be downright confused about that. I think that we have, um, we have a committee, a Public Arts Committee, we have a policy, we, uh, both items, uh, fall with it, fell within that policy, one fell within it, this one falls within it. And, uh, and, and the Public Arts Committee has a mandate. In both instances, that was followed. I'm, I supported that one, I'm going to support this one. I agree that we need to look at the policy. It, um, as, as, uh, councillor Hirsch says, at, at a time when we're being so fiscally conscious, it seems, um, difficult for some people to accept that we're, that we're spending money on public art. I can tell you though, we have a reserve, we have, as I said, we have the policy framework and I think it would be inconsistent after the, uh, the commitment was given, the budget was made and the committee has done their work, not to support their recommendations. However, I will, I will support examining the policy in the future, absolutely. I, I agree with councillor Turnbull about that and I will be supporting this item.
Thank you. Councillor Turner?
Uh, thank you, your worship. I will also be supporting this. I certainly don't have an issue with looking at us changing the policy down the road, but once again, my comments are, we're this far along on this project and, uh, it was worked into our budget, it's part of our policy. I, I actually like it, it looks great. I think some of the other art that we've, uh, picked in the past, maybe I wasn't so much of supportive, but I really like this one, so I'm more than happy to support this.
Thank you. Councillor Varga?
Uh, through the chair, um, I'm kinda along the same lines as councillor Hirsch, where, um, being a garden guy, I didn't support the gardens that were going in there for the close to ninety-five thousand dollars. And at this time, I think, and it's no slight of, of the board that recommended this artwork to, to, uh, the Viner Center, but at this time, when, when we're looking to save money at other, other things, that we can maybe keep it in, in the, in the reserve and look at it down the road when maybe the reserves don't get bigger, but we do do better in different divisions within our, within our community and can take a look at the financial fit and say, okay, now it's time when we can spend money on this artwork. So I will too not be supporting this.
Thank you, councillor Dumanowski?
Well, your worship, I, I, um, I share some of the sentiments that councillor Friesen spoke to. I, and I, I value the fact that around this table, we have the opportunity to agree or disagree. I'm, if I were the public and, um, a spokesperson for the public, having sat at that table and been doing this for a while, I would be confused too by the process. We have a policy, we have a committee in place for the very stated reason and the derivative of that, their purpose today. Um, if we want to dismantle that, that's a total different conversation. But, um, again, I, I, I respect that everyone has their own opinion. As far as local or outside, we've had l- many local artists, um, artwork showcased and we should continue to do that. I, I like the, the notion of exploring that a little bit more. But, uh, what I like about art and I'm, I, I, I value arts and culture tremendously. I'm, I, I'm not artistic or necessarily, um, able to do anything like act or be in dramatic plays, but I value it. I, I, it's part of who I am. But what I love mostly about the varied artworks and things that come forward and have come forward in the past is that we have the opportunity to ponder it, we have the opportunity to reflect on it, we can even disagree and argue about it and be confused by it, but in the end, we can admire it. And I admire the work that this committee's done.
Thank you, councillor Somraj.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I understand the, uh, the desire for local preference for, uh, for these commissions or just any work in general, uh, but the Public Art Committee did follow certain criteria and they're prohibited from looking at, uh, at local preference for this, uh, for this commission. So I, you know, obviously there's some will to open up the policy and I think that's, uh, that's a discussion we need to have, but, uh, given that this is the way that it's supposed to work, uh, I think, uh, I think it's, it's necessary to vote yes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? Oh, councillor, sorry, councillor Friesen?
Sorry, I just, I have to say this, I, I don't know how the vote is going to go. At my, by my count, you're the swivel, the swivel position. Um, and not to make you feel guilty or anything, pressured, you know, whatever, but, uh, just kidding. I, I just, if I was a member of the Public Art Committee, sitting here tonight, if this also goes down, I would have to question the validity of me being on this committee. We appoint a committee, we give them a budget, we give them a mandate, and then we are inconsistent in how we deal with, with their recommendations. If I was a member of the committee, I'd be saying, why do you have me? I don't ever wanna work on one of these projects again if you're just going to turn down everything we say. So if, if that is the case, I think we ought to, first of all, we need to recognize the good work of the Public Art Committee. And the second thing is, I think we ought to agree that we don't give them anymore tasks if we're going to vote them down all the time until we can iron out the policy. So I, I just had to say that. I wanna recognize the work of the committee.
Thank you. Councillor Hirsch?
Well, I appreciate councillor Friesen's point. I, I think, for me, it's a moot point. I absolutely value the contributions that any committee does, uh, to the citizenry of Medicine Hat, so that's being said. Um, but I make no, uh, you know, I don't feel like I need to apologize for the fact that the macro developments of, uh, economy going, uh, that is inconsistent at best, uh, something that we can't necessarily constrain or contain. Um, and the fact is, I'm sure there's members of the Art Committee and others that are looking for funding, quite frankly, that are very understanding of the fact that we are, are guided by the public purse. And, you know, it happened to be that two times in a row in terms of the art, I, I understand that and it's unfortunate, but again, you know, you talk about policy, but I talk about a strategic plan that was just laid in front of us. Number one priority was fiscal responsibility.
Yep. Thank you. All good points. Any other questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? That passes five to three in favor.
Okay, our next report is item six point four, the Corporate Services Committee Meeting of March twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, and this is on page fifty-two of your agenda and the report is for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Our last report is item six point five, the Administrative Committee Meeting of March twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, on page sixty-four of your agenda, and this report is for adoption and information.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Under reports for reception, item seven point one, the Heritage Resources Committee Meeting Minutes of March thirteenth, twenty eighteen, on page seventy-seven of your agenda.
I'll move for information.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? Unanimous, thank you.
Our next report for reception is item seven point two, the Municipal Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of March fourteenth, twenty eighteen, on page eighty of your agenda.
I move this report for reception.
Second.
Questions, comments? Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
And our last report for reception is item seven point three, the Draft Minutes of the Medicine Hat Police Commission of March fifteenth, twenty eighteen, and the Police Chief's Report on page eighty-six of your agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Councillor Varga?
Uh, once again, it was, uh, through the chair, a very thorough report with, uh, a lot of good information. I guess the one in, information item that was troubling was the one that got sent down to Massachusetts, I believe, with something going on with a, a student. And it came back to our, our, um, our police back at the, at the school. So it was very interesting, actually. So I'm just wondering if there's any more precaution because of what's happening in the United States with, with schools, if we're taking a different look at it or our police are looking at it a different way to make sure that they're engaged and, and just in case there is any trouble in the future. I'm hoping in our little community that'll never happen, right? And, but you never know, right? So I'm just wondering if they're actually looking at that and, and doing some research and figuring out different ways or possibilities in case something like that does happen within our community.
Councillor Friesen?
Well, I, 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 I don't have a specific answer for you because we didn't ask if there was additional research or more work than usual being done, but, and we can certainly ask that question and get back to you, but I can tell you this, um, we, those types of incidents are not taken lightly and they are definitely a part of the, of the, um, I don't wanna say responsibility, but the mandate of the school resource officers and also all the other officers, but most particularly, they are the ones that work most closely with the schools. And so when there are incidents like that that are happening, they, they take it, they have a, a, a second eye almost and are ever vigilant. We've gotta be careful we don't put the responsibility for those kinds of things on any one officer or a few officers, because of course, it, it isn't really, it's, it's also a community thing and a policing thing, but they are not taken lightly. And I can tell you that our, our police service is extremely proactive in areas that you might not consider traditional, obviously, traffic enforcement, citizen safety, those kinds of things. But when it comes to community, uh, drugs, uh, violence, those kinds of things, uh, uh, family violence, mental health issues, they're extremely proactive and, um, and have taken a real leadership role where some communities, I don't wanna say leg behind maybe, but maybe, maybe that's right. I think we've, we've shown real leadership in those areas. But I will, uh, we can commit to taking it back and asking if there's any specific initiatives that we're not aware of.
Thank you. Councillor Dumanowski?
Uh, just to add to it, councillor Friesen said, I, I'm not an official spokesperson clearly for the Catholic district whom I work for, but I can say that all three districts in our region, um, subscribe to Hour Zero and it's a, um, national, maybe even international recognized, um, process for safety and, and whatnot that, that is clearly targeted to the, the school setting, uh, so it speaks to lockdowns, holding secures, et cetera. It, part of it is around the vernacular and also what you do in those instances, but I can say this, as it ties to the report, is, uh, the police service is a, a great partner. I mean, we have school resource officers that there's a cost share component to all the schools, uh, but, but they're great for partnering when it comes to any kind of communication or educational component. I've, uh, called on many times to the police service, uh, as a resource for, uh, parent discussions on different topics, but, but school settings are always dealing with this and communities are dealing with it. We just saw a, an incident with a drive-by scenario, uh, it appears, in our community. I mean, so we have to grapple with these things and I, I can assure you that the service is, uh, always trying to stay on top of these things. They have all the resources available to them and the schools work in concert with them as much as physically possible.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Okay, under our bylaws for second and third reading section, we have item eight point one, bylaw four, 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 seven, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw three, zero, zero, eight, the City of Medicine Hat subdivision authorities bylaw, on page one twenty-three of your agenda.
I move that bylaw four, 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 seven, be read a second time.
Second.
Can you, uh, councillor Hirsch?
Your worship, uh, so is this second reading or?
This is second reading, yes.
Okay, very good. I'll, I'll postpone my comments.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on second reading? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
I move that, uh, bylaw four, 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 seven, be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions on third reading? Okay, oh, you're waiting till the, right till the end? Okay, councillor Hirsch?
Well, just, uh, I think it's important for us to highlight the fact that this is a, um, a good news story and the fact that there's always initiatives within the City of Medicine Hat to be, uh, respectful, uh, to business people that wanna develop, et cetera. Um, we've heard numerous, uh, people within the community and I think we've, we, being the city, have done strides, uh, in terms of getting out of the way of, of doing business and that we've heard things like red tape reduction, et cetera, and all that kinda stuff. So I think this is again, a good news story and I think it's something that we, we should be highlighting.
Thank you. Any other comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Okay, under our new bylaw section, we have item nine point one, bylaw four, four, seven, zero, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to authorize the preparation of supplementary assessments in the City of Medicine Hat during twenty eighteen, and this is on page one twenty-nine of your agenda.
And we can go for all three. And we can go for all three readings tonight if you so wish.
Worship, I seek leave of council to introduce Bylaw 4470 and ask that it be read a first time.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote on that. Sorry, that's, yeah, if we could vote on that. That was unanimous, thank you.
I ask that Bylaw 4470 be read a second time.
Any questions or comments on second reading? Right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
This time, your worship, I'd like to seek unanimous consent of council to move to third reading.
Okay, if we could, if we could vote on unanimous consent? Okay, you may proceed.
I ask that Bylaw 4470 be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Have no notice of motion, so we're going to move on to item 11.1, under New Business, and this is the appointment of alternate assessment review board member.
Worship, I ask that Don Knutson be appointed as an alternate local assessment review board member effective immediately with the term to expire December 31st, 2018.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Okay, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you. Seeing no more business before this council, we are adjourned.